Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council's special meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Kim, if you could please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, we have one item on our agenda for this special meeting, and it's the 2025-2026 biennial budget message presentation. I am going to move over there to the podium, and we'll get this, we'll get this show started. Immediately following this meeting, or I guess, beginning at 5:30, the council will go into workshop to have any initial questions answered, receive their budget materials, and lay out the schedule for the upcoming meetings as we move forward. All right, good evening again. We just changed spots. I want to start with Council President Corr, members of the city council, Kent residents. I am very proud tonight to present the 2025-26 biennial budget. This proposed budget was prepared in collaboration with all of you, the city council, all of our city departments, and a multitude of engagement with our, with our Kent residents. As a result of that collaboration, I firmly believe that this budget is a roadmap that reflects the values of our organization and its commitment to our community. It is why I am grateful that we, as city leaders, share values that center around benefiting our residents, business, and visitors. I want to thank the council for its teamwork and commitment to improvement so that we can continue to make Kent a place that we are all very proud of. Over the last several years, inflation has played a major role in our decision-making process. We are all very aware of the impacts of inflation from our personal budgets, all the way up through what we're seeing here at the city. With CPIW for the Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue area coming in at 40-year record-high numbers, we recognize a growth in expenditures would be imminent. Over the past several years, we have certainly seen expenditures grow rapidly. Inflation has exacerbated the city's structural imbalance as labor contracts are tied, at least in part, to CPIW. Outside of salaries and benefits, operation and project costs are on the rise as well. Earlier this year, knowing that inflation was going to impact the 25-26 biennial budget, council, along with our directors, agreed to maintain a status quo budget for this biennium, all of those conversations we had at the council, at the council retreat. You will see that this budget does exactly that, as well as provide several options for restoration and stabilization. It was agreed that any budget request would be accompanied by a revenue stream or an expenditure reduction to support it, and we collectively agreed to no new initiatives. This budget that you're going to be presented honors all of those agreements that we had from earlier this year. Within the 884 million total 25-26 biennial budget, 259 million is allocated to the general fund. The proposed general fund budget has been established with the intent to use some of the city's reserves in the general fund to balance the budget in both '25 and '26. Our reserves are above the required minimums, and this is the kind of use that they were intended for. Very, very grateful for the work that past councils did to get those reserves built back up. So let's talk about some specifics. We've continued our commitment to equity in city projects, programs, and service delivery. The Race and Equity Division worked closely with community stakeholders and staff to develop the council's race and equity strategic plan, and we've been working through actionable steps of that plan. This budget includes the use of ARPA funding to extend the Race and Equity Coordinator temporary limited-term position through 2026. This position will continue to support the mandatory Title VI reporting on behalf of the city and serve as a consultant to departments to assist in equity-related matters while assisting in the implementation of that Race and Equity Strategic Plan. Move on to public safety. The city will continue to be at the forefront of transparency and accountability in law enforcement. Recent laws on police reform changed how the department recruits police officers, interacts with our community, and provides service. The department expanded its recruiting efforts and, as a result, has been able to attract qualified and diverse recruits. Over the last year, the police department has been able to be fully staffed to the available budget. That continues to be a really important part of that sentence. We're fully staffed to our budget. But we know, it is well established, that Washington has the lowest rate of officers per capita as compared with other states in the nation, and the city of Kent is amongst the lowest in the state. Therefore, even at fully budgeted staffing, Kent has a significant need for additional officers. To remedy this, earlier this year, the city's legislative, one and only legislative priority, was to empower the city council to increase the sales tax councilmanically to pub, to fund public safety. If this had passed, it would have given us an opportunity to fund our police department, bringing our force up to just about average in the state of Washington. Not, not asking for the sun and the, and the stars and that, just, just to get us to average. Unfortunately, it did not pass. It did not make it to a floor, to the floor for a vote in the legislature, and we still have that same need for funding for additional police officers. This budget does include a modest increase in the BNO tax and as, as a way to help mitigate some immediate needs in our police department. Lay out some of those specific things that are in this plan. Over 50 of our 167 commissioned officers have a tenure of three years or less. We have a lot of brand-new officers in our police department. This has increased the responsibility of our sergeants, who have the duty to provide direct supervision, mentoring, and development of these officers. That, coupled with the changes in policing, have impacted the workload for our sergeants. The current nine officers-per-sergeant ratio is unrealistic and unsustainable. This budget includes the addition of two sergeants, along with one officer, which will reduce the sergeant-to-officer ratio to one sergeant per five officers. The three new positions will support the patrol division, giving the department the ability to have a slightly increased presence on the street and handling 911 calls. Funding has also been added to the budget to add a correctional sergeant, allowing them the ability to supervise, mentor, and develop our correctional officers instead of being pulled in to work a post. With this additional position, two correction sergeants will be available to work each shift. And these, while these additions will not get us anywhere near the staffing levels that we need, it will help mitigate some of those immediate needs. We will continue our efforts with the legislature for additional funding options to fund our police department to necessary levels. Those conversations are already, already in the works with our legislative delegation. State-level police reform bills have made apprehending criminal suspects significantly more challenging. In our continued response to regionally increasing crime, this budget does include funding for advanced technology to fight and investigate crime. We use drones daily for in-progress calls and crime scene investigation. The drones we currently have are past their operational life and have operational security issues as well. This budget includes funding to replace three drones per year. In addition, this budget includes the purchase of the FUSIS platform. FUSIS is a real-time crime center platform that provides the ability for businesses and residents to allow the police department to access security cameras that they may have. They pay a small fee, and they're given a box that plugs into their private cameras. The department does not have unrestricted access to the cameras. They will only be able to see cameras that are a part of the FUSIS Crime Center, but if an incident does occur in the view of these cameras that are a part of this program, our detectives will be able to pull video from those cameras and write, and pull them right into that FUSIS system. They won't be doing the back-and-forth and loading videos onto thumb drives and bringing them back to the department to investigate, and we truly believe that this program will save our detectives hundreds of hours a year. In 2022, the budgeted portion of House Bill 1590 Sales Tax, again, thank you to the council for making that decision to make sure that that money came here to the city. The decision was made to use that funding to support our co-responder program. With those funds, the city partnered with Pugetstown Regional Fire Authority to participate in the FD Cares Program. This program is ongoing and will be included in the 25-26 budget. With, with grant funding in the last year, we were also able to partner with Project Be Free, an organization that is serving all of King County since 2022. Their focus is on serving the entire family affected by domestic violence and has had a dramatic effect on all those contacted, including our officers. We've heard Council President Corr talked a little bit about Project Be Free at the last meeting. We've had our department come in and present on the great work that they're doing. With the grant dollars coming to an end, this budget proposal does include $185,000 a year to continue the use of this service. This funding will provide dedicated staffing from Project Be Free to Kent and to our residents. It's just another step in our commitment to that co-responder model. In the short term that it's been instituted, we've seen dramatically positive effects on both the residents that are receiving these services, the families, the offenders, as well as the tools that it provides our officers when they're responding to those domestic violence calls. While it's too early in the program to grade effectiveness on recidivism, we truly do believe that we will be able to show hard data that corresponds to recidivism going down for domestic violence defendants that have been served by Project Be Free. Next item in public safety, the police department has recently created a professional standards unit. This unit is responsible for handing, handling complaints that come into the department. Currently, it is a largely manual process to review complaints, comply with public records request requirements, and track trends and look for common issues. To make efficiencies and ensure transparency in how complaints are resolved, this budget includes funding to implement the professional standards suite, which is available in Power DMS. Power DMS is the system that the police department currently uses for policies and for their SOPs or standard operating procedures. The professional standards suite securely manages internal affairs cases, has an early intervention program, and has forms that allow for easy tracking of things like use of force and pursuits. Onto officer wellness. I think this is something that's very important to all of us. It's like when you get on the airplane, we say, put your oxygen masks on first so you can help someone else. We need to make sure that our officers are healthy so that they can continue to take care of our community. It's very important in their ability to be able to protect and serve. We support our officers' mental and physical well-being through access to holistic wellness services. This budget includes $30,000 to expand opportunities available to our officers for wellness visits with licensed mental health providers. The police officer's role is stressful, emotionally draining, and physically taxing. Research has shown that police wellness programs reduce on-the-job injuries, improve retention, and help with recruitment. Additionally, maximizing wellness in police staff protects our significant investment in, in our officers, in the training, equipment, and other costs that are associated with personnel. Moves us into some of the highlights under courts and law. So the workload of our probation officers has increased significantly as we've seen a rise in mental health and drug cases, which require more intensive supervision. They're just more complicated. This budget includes the addition of a probation officer to help with the increased demands of the job, including providing support for general probation services, mental health caseloads, and are growing, and in a positive way, DUI and community court programs. I know it's something that council strongly supports. The municipal court has been awarded a $75,000 grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to cover half the cost of this additional probation officer in 2025. There's no guarantee that that will, that will come back again, but the budget does have the remainder of that position in '25 being paid for by a shift in the opioid settlement dollars, so that money that we have been seeing come in from those, those settlements across the country. The proposed budget also includes the addition of an assistant city attorney for the civil division beginning in 2026. The civil attorneys have been managing increased workload in both volume and complexity. That tends to be a theme. The work that we are doing here as a city is getting more complex in every single area. It's due to priority being given to several large and simultaneous projects, along with code enforcement issues relating to problem properties, I think, Phoenix Court, the amount of work, you all saw the binders that, that Victoria had regarding that work. Other issues such as an increase in encampment-related issues, major projects going on in the city, and state legislation that's contrary to current city policies and governance have also added to that workload. Again, the volume and complexity of the work is necessitating the need for this additional civil attorney. Economic and community development. The city's permit center continues to realize demands for service beyond their capacity with current staffing levels. Beginning in 2025, Washington cities will be required to comply with unfunded state mandates that include shortened permit issuance times. So those are a good thing, but it comes at a cost. It means that we've got more work to do in a shorter amount of time. Both reporting requirements will increase, and penalties will apply if timeliness requirements are not met. We have, are looking for a new position in the permit center, offset by the revenues generated by the permit center. This budget converts an expiring temporary limited-term TLT permit technician position to a permanent position. These mandates are not going away, and we're going to need that ongoing support. The budget also converts two additional TLT positions to permanent ones, one long-range planner and the other a current planner. And finally, the budget includes a new position within the Economic and Community Development Department to administer the city's floodplain certification program, something that's very important, especially to our residents and businesses that are in the valley. A portion of this position will be paid for out of the drainage fund. All right, parks and recreation. Kent Park's newly-developed asset management system opens unprecedented opportunities to analyze and optimize Park's operational workflow, assess the condition of assets, evaluate Park's performance. This innovative system is a direct result of the dedicated efforts of the GIS analyst position. GIS analyst is essential in managing our assets and providing technical support for all geospatial data created within our system, so we've been able to develop a comprehensive map of our assets and all of the different things that go into them. This role ensures accurate collection, maintenance, and analysis of spatial data, which is crucial for informed decision-making. This budget converts the expiring TLT to a permanent position, allowing the Parks Department to operate, operationalize, and optimize efficiencies by streamlining maintenance schedules, prioritizing repairs, and allocating resources more effectively. It will ask, enhance asset condition monitoring through regular assessment and document the condition of those park assets, helping us to identify potential issues before they become larger problems. It's that whole idea, if you can maintain things and stay on that regular schedule, it is less expensive than having to replace them. We'll be able to track park performance by tracking and analyzing usage and visitor satisfaction, and it will also foster community engagement through the use of interactive maps and data visualization to engage with our community, soliciting feedback, and promoting Park's programs and events. This budget also extends a TLT Parks Coordinator position at the senior center through 2026, allowing the Parks Department to review its business model for the senior center and create a long-term viable solution for the center that we will be bringing back to council in either the mid-biennial budget adjustment or for the next biennial budget. Budget also extends a TLT Facilities Capital Projects Manager, which is currently slated to expire in May of '25 for an additional three years. We've got large projects such as the Kent East Hill Operation Center or Keyhawk, and there is no doubt that additional support will be needed as we move all of these projects going forward. The Kent Commons Community Center currently has a part-time program assistant who supports community education programming, handling essential tasks such as contracts and billings, payments, onboarding, coverage, special events, recitals, and more. The demands on this position have grown significantly, and the workload has exceeded what is a part-time position can be managed effectively. So to address this issue, the budget increases this position from part-time to a full-time position. The adjustment will create a sustainable workload, allow for consistent office coverage, as well as the ability to manage duties effectively during things like lunch breaks when someone's out on vacation or sick leave. To cover the increased costs for this position, the Parks Department has reduced its part-time line items within the Recreation Division. The result will ensure that our common staff can meet the growing demands efficiently and continue to provide high-quality service to our community. We know that with the renovations at the Commons, we're going to start seeing even more people using that space, and this is an important position to that. In 2023, dedicated staff hours were allocated for encampment management as a part of our natural resources team, with the expectation that those additional staff hours would provide the necessary resources. Unfortunately, the demand for encampment response is only getting higher, currently consuming 65% of available staff time. It is a large portion of the work. These are the same staff resources that are responsible for things like trail maintenance and community stewardship events via our Green Kent program. Again, something that I know is extremely important to, to council and our community. Annually, 10 to 15 locations require contracted services with typical costs ranging from $3,000 to $5,000 a day for one to two days of work, not including those variable disposal costs. So it's really expensive to clean up these encampments. To effectively manage this ongoing issue, the budget includes an additional $75,000 a year for contracted encampment cleanup services. Kent Parks, through its recreational and cultural services division, proudly delivers the Spotlight Series. We hear Councilmember Fincher report on that at each one of our meetings. This series brings a diverse range of performers to our community and really enriches our community's cultural landscape. The performances serve an estimated 2,500 to 3,000 people annually. What we are seeing is the associated cost of these events has risen sharply. Again, that seems to be a theme across the board. This budget does include an increase of $55,000 a year for the Spotlight Series to ensure that we are able to attract and contract with robust cultural performers that continue to benefit the entire community. This increased cost is offset by a reduction in underutilized budget items in the Parks Department, so not, not new money. This is good news, but it also comes, again, with that other side. The use of our parks has been increasing and changing rapidly over the last several years. The requires, the levels of, the, this requires our delivery of services to evolve. In 2024, our Parks Department explored a one-time pilot in which it used contracted security to provide support and maintenance at high, at high-use parks like Lake Meridian, Van Doren's, Hogan at Russell Road, and West Fenwick. This program has been successful. The current use of the contract security services to supplement park staff, securing both park buildings and parking lots, has already shown, has already shown a reduction in that illicit use after-park hours. While it has not eliminated all of the issue, it is a positive step forward in helping to bring down the needed police response when we've got neighbors that are saying, hey, there's a, there's a party going on in the parking lot of the park. We're seeing those incidents come down as we're able to gate and lock that, those areas. The program currently includes the lockup of park restroom buildings and parking lots at 28 locations to discourage this outside-of-normal-hours use. The budget does include $50,000 per year to include this, or to continue this program. Safety and security of our employees and facilities have been at the forefront of our minds as we've, as we've continued moving our park system forward, but we have seen an increased growth in things like theft, vandalism, and acts of violence. We are seeing vandalism occur regularly at several park locations, and the repair and replacement of things like doors, restroom dividers, lighting, and other elements of Park's facilities are straining our existing budgets. Because of this, we are dedicating $50,000 a year to cover the increased costs in this area. It's a sad reality, but something that we need to do. We need to be able to maintain our parks at a level that our community can enjoy, and this is part of what these increased costs entail. All right, moving on to finance. Over the last couple of years, we have worked to increase, like I said, employee safety through upgraded security measures at our facilities, having field staff double up when working in high-risk areas and distributing staff safety videos, implementing training, and we even put a pepper spray policy into effect this last year. Our meter-reading staff are no different. They're a very public-facing group here in the city, and they're experiencing safety issues in the field while they're not only reading meters but shutting off delinquent accounts. At its current staffing levels, the meter-reader group is unable to double up in some of these areas due to a growing number of meters, again, growth. Again, growth is a good thing, we're seeing more, but we are also seeing an increase in those delinquent accounts that are requiring shut off. This budget includes the addition of a meter reader to allow for better workflow, a more manageable workload for city meter staff, and the ability to double up on those routes where needed, increasing safety of our employees. Public Works. Our drainage fund employees have close to four hundred sites to mow and trim during the growing season. In the past, we've tried to use temporary positions to help with this work, but unfortunately, it is getting increasingly difficult to retain and attract for these temporary-type positions, knowing that people are really looking for that, that permanent full-time employment. When we have those losses in that temporary staff, it leaves our crews short-staffed and unable to maintain the sites that the drainage vegetation team is responsible for. Using funding from the temporary positions budget, this budget includes the addition of a permanent full-time drainage vegetation maintenance position. This proposed budget also extends a TLT design engineer, which is set to expire in June of twenty-five. This position will continue to support current and upcoming work. As you all know, and we celebrate a lot, the city's been successful in our grant applications and has been awarded grants from regional funding partners such as the Transportation Improvement Board and the Puget Sound Regional Council. This position of this design engineer that's being converted will ensure we can continue to deliver on our current commitments without adding the expense, the costly expenses of consultants. So again, you've got to be able to spend the money to be able to be successful in those grants, and we need to make sure that we're staying on track. With the use of some of our fleet fund balance, this budget includes a replacement of thirteen pieces of major equipment for both parks and public works for assets that are past their useful life and are in need of replacement. These things include mowers, tractors, wood chippers, flatbed trailers, portable light towers, those kinds of things, so looking at using that fleet fund balance to replace some of this bigger equipment. Finally, this budget includes investments in the city's capital program. So East Hill North Community Park, council just had a presentation on some suggestions there. We're looking at roadway improvements. The parks department was awarded approximately two and a half million from the State Department of Commerce to develop the East Hill North Community Park. This budget includes an additional one point five million to support near-term improvements along one hundred and thirty-second, which will improve pedestrian connectivity from the neighborhoods surrounding the park, opening up the way for a more modest set of improvements, things like limited parking restroom and trails at East Hill North Community Park. The roadway improvements along one hundred and thirty-second would likely include extruded curb, separated walkway along the eastern edge of the road with those rapid, rectangular rapid-flashing beacons at two eighteenth and two fourteenth, with a short segment of an elevated boardwalk between two fourteenth and two sixteenth. I know that when I was out talking to the neighborhood up there, they were really excited about those connectivity improvements, the potential of them. These improvements would tie in with trail improvements in the park, creating safe bike and pedestrian access to the park and allowing us to facilitate the future expansion, so building out that entire program. This is one that I think residents will be really excited about, roundabout project design funding. A single-lane roundabout at the intersection of one hundred and sixteenth and two forty-eighth, who's ever been stuck in traffic there, I'm seeing smiles and nods. It's a part, this, this improvement is a part of our transportation master plan. As you all know, the intersection is high congestion during morning and afternoon commutes. It's, it's very close to the Kent East Hill Operation Center, the Regional Fire Authority Station Number Seventy-four, the YMCA, Clark Lake Park, Moro Meadows, Martin Sortoon, and George Daniel Elementary. Relief of this congestion would, congestion would be beneficial to the commuters on the East Hill, emergency responders that are in and out of the fire station, as well as our employees as we transition them up to Keyhawk as that building gets finished. Multimodal enhancements would improve, would also be improved at this location, and in order to be ready to take advantage of those granting opportunities, and again, very confident that those opportunities will present themselves as we become really good at securing those grants, this budget includes three hundred thousand dollars for design. Showing the grantors that we are ready to build that project is going to be really important, so we think that this three hundred thousand for design is really that key step in moving that project forward. Technology. It's a good thing, and we need to be able to take care of it. During this biennial, the city will continue to invest in technology by funding hardware and software life cycles at approximately one point seven million each year, in addition to the three point four million in capital projects over the biennial. Many of these improvements are intended to support our IT security zero-trust architecture approach. Again, it's in the news all the time. Cybersecurity is something that's extremely important. It can cripple an organization, and we need to be making, making investments there. So we recently did a, an IT reorganization that helps us further focus on bolstering our security and contract accountability. Some of the technology improvements include replacement of city council and committee meeting agenda and video management software. It's all going to be in your books, I'm not going to go through all of the, the numbers. Updates to Inova, which is our point-of-sale program, modernization of our active directory services, migration of telestaff, the program that we bought in conjunction with Workday. We need to migrate that to Google Cloud as a part of the, the services requirements. We've got integration with ValleyCom's new CAD or computer-aided design program, replace and create integrations in the legacy correction jail management system, so we currently have Tiburon, we're moving to a new system, Black Creek. All of these things come with costs and a replacement of the current database to use that we use to manage our stormwater workflows, including our NPDES program and FOG, everybody's favorite fats, oils, and grease programs. We need to make sure that we're able to track and, and work those through, and so that also comes with a cost. So with that, tonight, council, I respectfully transmit the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six budget to the city council for consideration. There is a tremendous amount of demand for city services. All you have to do is open up your inbox to know that, right? This community deserves and expects that we provide them with services. Our job as city leaders is to remain fiscally responsible, anticipate our future challenges, and move our city forward. I believe this proposed budget accomplishes all of those obligations. This documentation, document is a representation of collaborative efforts, again, between city leadership, city council, city staff, and our community. I would like to extend my gratitude to our CAO, Pat Fitzpatrick, all of our department directors and their staff for the dedication and hard work that put this budget together. I want to say a huge thank you to our finance department, particularly Paula Painter, our finance director, financial planning manager, Michelle Ferguson, and her team, Kathleen McConnell and Shane Sorensen. The amount of work that goes into putting this budget book together, making sure that we get here tonight with something to put in front of you all, I can't understate the number of hours that actually turn into days and weeks when, when this process starts, and the amount of input and creative thinking that it comes into problem solving. Again, with a status quo budget and not having new, significant new, new revenue sources, we've got to be really creative in what we can pay for and what we can support and what we can't. So I, huge thank you goes out to everyone that's involved in putting this budget together, the hard work and collaboration, everyone's willingness to continue to move our city forward. Our residents, businesses, and visitors are counting on it, and they deserve nothing less than our support. So with that, council, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me drone-on for so long. I'm very proud of the work that everyone in our city has put into this proposed budget and very much looking forward to the conversation over the next series of meetings as you all dive in and make sure that it also meets your needs and that you are, are feeling like we're, we're headed in the right direction in what we're funding and the programs that we're supporting. So thank you very, very much.
All right, back in, in the other, in the other chair. With that, that brings us to the end of our agenda for the September twenty-third Kent City Council Special Meeting, and with that, we are adjourned.